Testing my audio to see if anybody is here. Yeah, I'm gonna switch wifi, but yeah, I'll be right back.
Greetings.
Here is Mr. Chairman.
Yes, how are we doing on uh? On uh Quorum?
Would you let us know what the count do we have now?
So far, I only see.
Yeah, we have Julianne and Chase.
Oh, I didn't, I can't see him, Mike.
Demetrius is here in person, we're waiting for him to get to the table.
Oh, Chase is, there's Julianne. How'd you been? How's Chase?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, so I think we are three, four at this point, right, three?
We got, we got time, we got time.
Three minutes.
Let's just keep it cool, keep it cool.
Okay, you know, I'm always stressed, you know that about me, right? I'm surprised Gretchen's not here. Are any, oh, Demetrius is in the room, right? And is that any other commissioners in the room?
No other commissioners are in the room.
Okay. That was Corinne who I thought was Amy. I don't have my glasses on. I don't wear glasses. Uh Gretchen is waiting to be admitted. Are you on the, the link that?
No.
I fear that a bunch of people have the old link from before instead of the one that. Yeah, yeah Gretchen went is the one on her calendar, which I did as well, but she has the new one, do you have the new one now?
Technically, we have five people on right now, which since we don't have Amy anymore, is technically Quorum.
I want to know soon, because the one I was on before said teams.
Yeah, this is, no, we are still eleven, so Quorum has six.
Yeah, I'm here.
He has to be more than half.
All right, we need one more then, Gretchen's coming in, we'll be good.
Yeah, Gretchen's coming on.
I'm here.
Yeah, you made five.
Hello, Cora.
Makes sense.
Hi, how are you?
Okay.
Gretchen will make six. There's Gretchen. And hopefully Kimber will be here as I.
Recording in progress.
Various committee reports.
Hello, Gretchen.
Hi Gretchen. So I think we have Quorum and I will start us. Me will come to order, the time is now five thirty-one PM on Monday, September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission, I'm wearing a black sweater today, trying to stay warm in this cool weather in New York. I will now call the role, when you hear your name, please answer present. Core masses very. Cora. Julianne.
Present.
Demetrius. Demetrius?
Present.
I'm present, I couldn't unmute, sorry.
Thank you, Chrisley, Janice Kim, Chase.
Present.
Kimber. Carla. Hector. Gretchen.
Present.
A Quorum is present, this is a meeting of a public body held in open session as governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the Commission's website, uh DCRS.DC.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Governments Central Meetings Calendar at open-dc.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, with some of the commissioners at two hundred I Street location, and the others remotely via the Zoom platform. The meeting is live streamed on the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world, who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, others were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nukachtenk and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events, and to use such truths to give the legacy, I'm sorry, to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Hearing no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. Good evening and welcome to everyone. Uh we have a fair amount of business to accomplish this evening, including two votes that will be taken following all the committee reports. So we will launch into them. Uh I don't think that we have any. Uh we don't have a presenter today, normally it's our case to have an artist to present to us, but for some odd reason that's not happening today, but we'll try to make it up next month. Uh so we'll move on to our public comment portion. We have a few individuals signed up for public comments this evening, the Commission welcomes your comments, they're very important to us. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the Chair. Note that we will not be engaged in dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the Commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff would be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. Uh do we have James Zimmerman here?
He's, he's not here, Mr. Chairman.
Uh and actually, that's the only name I had, so we have no other public comments?
Okay, I'll see you.
Edward just put in the chat that there's no public comments.
That's what I saw, good. Uh so, we will go on to the Executive Director's report, Aaron.
Thank you, I'm Aaron Myers, Executive Director, DC Commission owned Arts and Humanities. I'm African American male, wearing a uh off-white linen shirt. We'll first begin with our staff updates, I would like to welcome our newest Grant Management Specialist Danielle Gray. We have also added three new contractors, Mauricio Pita, Shree Feldman, and Patience Rowe. Welcome to all of you, we look forward to working with all of you. Uh we also want to thank Logan Brown for his work here at CAH and Stan as a resource for him as he will be exploring other opportunities. Uh to the Congressional Black Caucus, uh annual Legislative Conference reception. This year, the Commission held a reception celebrating.
In place.
Uh DC delegate Elvina Holmes Norton during the Congressional Black Caucus's annual Legislative Conference. More than two hundred people attended the event held at the International Square. I want to thank Joseph Nixonkey and Kathy Doe for hosting us. I would like to thank all the staff that volunteered for the event. We were delighted to meet many of our former and current grantees, educate members of both Administration and City Council about what we're hoping to do, as well as share the work of the agency with people around the country. Our Art Bank, uh the DC Art Now, Art All Night opening reception is scheduled for this Friday, which will be tomorrow, am I correct? The day is Thursday, yes, tomorrow, September twenty-seventh at five PM to nine PM here in the gallery. This year's event will feature district vendors who will be stacked out in front of the building until ten AM, and I'm just, so I'm clear with my staff, they will be under the covered portion. So we will be free from any raindrops if uh need be. And of course, the arts inside as well. Our grants, during our current grant season, the team has held more than eighty panels for FY25 representing more than twelve hundred applicants. We are prepared to begin the new fiscal year today with the Commission voting on both the public arts, education, and our other grants. The Grants Team will provide additional updates in their reports. For the month of October, CAH is adopting an all-hands-on-deck approach in supporting the Grants and Public Art Team and striving to get our grant awards out sooner to the public. Our resource allocation team has worked with both our Grants and Public Art Department to examine new workflow protocols that we feel will be beneficial to our awardees. To help us really meet the moment, we will need the public's help. We encourage those who submitted to ensure their clean hands, business licenses, insurance, DIPS passwords, direct deposit information, address and email addresses are all current. Having these crucial elements up to date helps the process be more efficient for everyone, and it keeps the attention of our grant managers focused on processing payments. Construction is now underway in the former OCTFME space that our current grant managers will occupy once all the work is completed. Uh and for those who are in the room, the glass arrives tomorrow that they'll be putting up. We are now looking at the actual moving of the Grants Team during the middle of October. I spoke with Director Hunter yesterday, and he was assured that DGS stands at the ready to continue their support to our agency through this entire process. For our website, absent a few minor changes, the website update is nearly complete. It will be going live, uh if it did not go live yet this week, it will be going live next week then. Our goal was to create and design, a, a design that is more user-friendly and where information is easily located. Uh lastly, we're gonna approach and deal with our strategic plan. We have been in constant contact with OCP regarding the strategic plan. This process has taken much longer than I or anyone at the agency has wanted. The delay from what we see has been set with the price we requested for the RFP and the actual price OCP wanted us to utilize. The one hundred thousand dollar threshold puts us between two contract administrators, and we're trying to best manage that. After being denied at the ninety-six thousand dollar price, I've authorized us to issue an RFP at the cap of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It is my hope that the research and the quotes we have presented, none of which exceed a hundred thousand dollars, will be considered by OCP. Our last strategic plan was placed on the market at over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but the company chose and submitted a quote under ninety thousand. I hope we find a happy medium. Uh we will remain in constant contact with OCP throughout this process. I should have said happy median with an N, not medium, we don't think they will conjure up anyone. So I thank you so much, uh and I'm looking forward to all the grantees, I can't stress enough, uh as I um uh close this, to all of those who have submitted to be encouraged. Uh if you uh don't get a grant this cycle, we don't want you to be discouraged from submitting in the future. If you do receive a grant, please ensure all of your information is current and ready to go so that we can uh move along with our process to get you your money in a timely fashion, thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I have a question.
Please.
Um hello, uh this is Julianne, I'm the Commissioner for uh Ward Six, and my question is about the theater census that opens up this coming Wednesday. Um with the music census that is closed and the public and all the stakeholders were told that the results would be given to the public or even to commissioners in the late summer with a series of infographics. I would love an update of when the public and the stakeholders and the commissioners will re- receive a full report out on the music census, so that as we go to the theater and dance community and ask them to, you know, take part, we can be assured that the agency will give the data to the public and to the commissioners in the timeline that's currently on the Theater and Dance uh website, thank you.
Thank you, so with our theater census, we will be moving that back to November. Uh we had an initial stakeholder meeting with uh the people who participated in our music census, and based on some of the feedback we heard from their initial look at some of the report, uh we wanted to incorporate some of that uh into uh what we needed to send to Sound Music Cities. So we are looking at October eleventh uh for the published date. Uh the staff and the commissioners will receive that report before it goes to the public. Um uh for that particular um 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 for that event, and I believe it's happening at Arena Stage, if I'm not mistaken. Tentatively at Arena Stage. So um we had some very interesting feedback from the music census, and I think the biggest takeaway for us is that we needed to really uh add some caveats around so, how some of the data, uh how we derived some of the percentages. Um because I know that we wanted, we did a massive amount of re- uh outreach to the GoGo community. However, there was still more we needed to do to ensure we were able to get some feedback and participation. I think we um deal with that with many censuses. Um we did see that jazz had a pretty uh solid um response, but when we did the census in two thousand nineteen, jazz was pretty uh active in that launch. Uh and that, so we were trying to reach out to the hip-hop community, the GoGo community, many other communities that were not as reflective as we wanted to, especially the um um the Hispanic community. Um we felt that we, as an agency, that was a eye-opening thing for me, that we as an agency need to be very um intentional about doing more outreach to that commu- that community as well. So October eleventh will be the date that it will be made public to everyone, the staff and the commissioners should have something before then, so that you can see what those responses are, and we've added some caveats so that the data that is presented does reflect some of the areas of improvement that we, we would need to do in future uh censuses. I hope that's helpful.
Just to clarify, the information will be released to the public on October eleventh, but commissioners will get the report out on the music census prior to that date, and the theater and dance census has been pushed back to November, but no date and no, 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 like, it starts in, on November X and then ends on whatever the end date would be.
That's been pushed back, and uh Edward, who's been taking the lead with that, he and I are scheduled to meet next week uh to discuss that.
May I ask a quick follow-up just for clarity, Aaron?
Absolutely.
Thanks, uh this is Commissioner Magano, Ward Three, I'm a black male, glasses, orange shirt. So ju- I just want clarity, when you release the music census, um are you in the intermediate time, like right now, are you trying to outreach to those communities that, that didn't participate as much? Or are you just putting in caveats uh to the current data and then releasing that later? Yeah, was it my turn?
Yeah, we're putting the caveats in the current data that we have, uh based upon the responses we heard from some of the stakeholders as we were going through the initial, we sent those caveats. We had that um stakeholder meeting along with Sound Music Cities, the organization, uh the company that actually did the report, so that they could hear some of that information, and they are taking that information and implemented into the report, so it can better reflect uh the reality of what the census was. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh next, we're going to finance, I know that Kimber is trying to get on and having some technology.
They fixed it, I'm on.
Oh, good, great, great, good.
They got me on, thank you. I was here, I was just, um, I was an attendee and not a panelist, so I've been able to listen.
You're a panelist.
I'm here, they, they got me hooked up, I'm ready to go, so, thank you. Awesome, good evening, um Kimber, love me, kitty, and if you saw me, not, you can see my picture, I'm an African American female, and I am um today wearing a black top, but you guys would know that, that's what I'm doing. So, let's see, uh this is our side of Finance Committee Report as we close out um and get ready to have, move into our um into our new budget year, so I think as we look at this sort of overall, you kind of see us winding down in terms of um really getting to the, almost to the near end, if you come all the way over in terms of what's available um left sort of of our overall budget, I guess the big question or certainly thing that we discussed in the um Finance Committee meeting is just sort of looking at our grants total, what's outstanding, what's still kind of pending, it's been great to see the team really um, you know, look at efficiencies and how we're getting uh our resources out the door. And so I think if we go to the next one, you'll kind of see a bigger breakdown between the administrative portion of the budget that's remaining, obviously, as we continue to run and operate the organization, and then you'll see a much lower chunk if you come into sort of our overall grants category in terms of, you know, almost um both in terms of our percentage available at the ten percent amount, and then if you look at the sum committed, right? We have a chunk that's still uh committed, really leaving a little bit less than four million of the total budget on the grants total remaining, excuse me, two million on grants. So anything that you guys would add to that, if we have Martine on or anybody else on the finance team, any other overall comments, questions?
So it continues to be pretty much unchanged?
That's correct.
But soon, very soon, it's gonna be very different as we launch into this new grant cycle.
That's right, now we're winding down.
Yes, yeah, new fiscal year which starts October one. Any questions from the commissioners on the finance report? If not, thank you Kimber, we'll go to Grants, Gretchen.
Hello, everyone, thank you so much for joining, I'm Gretchen Wharton, white female, black glasses, platinum hair, pink top. Um the Grants Team has been working so hard, as most of you know, this is really the busy season. Um while some of us have summer vacations, the Grants Team never does, because that's their busiest um season for panels, as is September and getting the money out of the door for all of our, our awardees. They successfully concluded the twenty-five summer panel cycle, which involved not only reviewing and updating guidelines, but also securing a diverse pool of artists and art practitioner peer reviews, and conducting comprehensive panel orientations. To date, the team hosted sixty-two panels, engaging over three hundred peer reviews. To date, the team hosted sixty two panels, engaging over three hundred peer review panelists. It's a lot of work and my pats off and thank you so much to everybody on the grants team.
And Gretchen, I think you have the state of it. Could you compare that to previous years just so that people understand the step up from year to year?
Yeah, let me see if it's down here. I haven't gotten there yet. For the past two years, the C A H Grants Program has significantly expanded. Terrell, do you have the numbers? It's not on the sheet that I have.
So our application wise is actually in the next paragraph, but just for grants, so far we've completed sixty two panels and we still have our capital projects panels to go. So we will have closer to eighty four panels. Last year, we did about sixty four panels total throughout. So we're up about twenty panels. And you will see that in Gretchen's next remarks as far as the rise of applications. Last year, our application amount went up by two hundred. We went up close to another two hundred this year, so.
Right. We had twelve hundred and six in F Y twenty four compared to fourteen forty one in F Y twenty five. So as you can see, it went from twelve oh six to fourteen forty one. But our budget, of course, has not kept pace. And I seem like I'm always on these calls asking everybody for money and saying we need more money because we have more people who need money and our artist community is definitely at the top of that group. We faced a budget decrease for F Y twenty five, mirroring challenges experienced by many government agencies in the district. And I'm sure those of you on the phone have heard this from every agency and certainly we're not the only one. But our budget was cut along with everyone else's. Through collaboration with the council, we were able to increase our F Y twenty five budget from forty three million to forty eight million. So and remember, F Y twenty five starts October one, a few weeks from now. So we do have a little bit more for next year. For comparison, our budget in F Y twenty four was fifty one million. Despite the funding shortfall, we remain committed to equitable and robust grant making. As our grant managers present their recommendations, you will hear about several challenges implemented in response to community feedback. We actually have talked to so many people in the community, gotten a lot of feedback, what to do right, what to do wrong, what did we do wrong, what we need to change just to make things better for everyone. These changes include an increased funding amount for our fellowship grant and the introduction of a new capacity building cohort for G O S. The grants department has made significant strides in connecting, inspiring, and supporting applicants for future grantees. What we're going to do, and this is a lot for you to focus on, but we're going to have each of the grant managers take you through their specific grant, the rationale for the awards. And then after we finish all of the grants, we will have a vote on that. Now, everything you're about to see has already been voted on by the grants committee. And that's why we're presenting to you the full commission, what we've already approved. Terrell?
We will start off with G O S. David Markey, if you want to start us off?
Good evening. I'm David Markey, the deputy director. I am a white male with gray hair and a rust colored top. So G O S is probably, or general operating support, is probably the most important organizational grant that we have at the agency. This figure that you see on the screen for the F Y twenty five budget, just under twenty million dollars, represents fifty percent of our grants budget. And as you can see, it's a slightly larger amount over the current year, F Y twenty four. The challenge that we're running into is that while the the total amount, dollar amount is slightly bigger, there's been a significant increase in the number of applicants to G O S. We have new organizations matriculating into the program every year. And so you'll see here that the increase from F Y twenty four, the current year, to F Y twenty five is thirty two. And just to give you a sense of how the, what the increase has been over the last several years, from F Y twenty one through F Y twenty five, there was a fifty six percent increase in the number of applications. G O S is a pretty nuanced and layered program. Traditionally, we use the each organization's federal nine ninety as a baseline for the awards. About four years ago, we further nuanced the numbers provided on the nine ninety by asking organizations of those total cash expenses, what amount was dedicated to arts and humanities programming in the District of Columbia. We do have some organizations that are not entirely arts and humanities organizations. And we also have some organizations that where all of their programming is not district based. So this smaller number is what we base the award on. Last year, council submitted or created the Budget Support Act legislation that put further stipulations on how we issue awards or determine awards. And I've listed them at the bottom of this particular page. So you'll see in last year's Budget Support Act, council qualified organizations' budget numbers to determine the maximum award amount size. One, organizations with budgets under one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars were not restricted in the size of their G O S award. Two, organizations over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars would not be able to receive an award that was more than fifty percent of their budget. And then if organization size is based on total district based arts and humanities cash expenses, we also have to consider any other government grants or contracts that that organization might receive. So as I said, it's a pretty nuanced, complex process that we've engaged, that we now have to engage in. There was one nuance to the, to this structure in the Budget Support Act legislation this past summer, and that was we were allowed and not to, only to include other C A H dollars. And we didn't have to include non-C A H government grants and contracts as part of the calculation. The, I won't go through the, on the second page, I won't go through the example, but it just gives you a sense of the restrictions and as to the size of an award. So at the July commission, our committee, grants committee meeting, the grants committee proposed the following. Again, these decisions were based on, you know, the knowledge that we had, that we had an increased number of applicants to the pool. And also, the budget was not increasing at the same rate. So we would no longer fund all eligible applicants to the G O S program. In F Y twenty one, we decided to do that. So for the past four years, we have been able to fund all applicants to the G O S cohort. But starting in F Y twenty five, we will go back to having a cutoff at a certain point in the ranking. We also decided to move the new capacity building cohort that Terrell referenced and Gretchen referenced to to the neighborhood arts program because it is more of a project based grant. There's a scope of work associated with it, whereas there's no scope of work associated with general operating support. I mentioned that we decided to go back to having a cutoff. And at the time, we weren't sure how the the numbers were going to shake out. We have a better sense now, so. But we based the cutoff on a percentage of the lowest ranked organizations across each of the ten, ten cohorts. And then finally, something that we implemented last year, and it was really because organizations, many organizations are still coming out of the the fallout of the pandemic. And so for many of them, their nine nineties, their annual nine nineties are sort of on a bit of a roller coaster. And so last year, in order to try to stabilize the community, we put some guardrails in place that if an organization fared better than they did in the previous year in terms of their ranking in a particular cohort, they could receive an award that was no more than ten thousand dollars above what was received the previous year. And similarly, if an organization didn't do as well in the year, that their, the reduction to their award would be no more than ten thousand dollars on the previous year. Again, we still have to adhere to the Budget Support Act legislation, so that trumps, trumps this in certain cases. On the final page, you will see a graph that shows the ten panel cohorts. And nine of them are grouped by organizational budget size and they were paneled accordingly. And then the tenth one is a smaller group of organizations that identify as service organizations. So they don't necessarily produce their own artistic work, but they are there in service to, to those other organizations that do. You'll see that there were a total of two hundred and five applications to this cohort. The funding range column, which is a fourth column from the left, mirrors the same funding ranges from last year. Again, our goal is to stabilize the community as much as possible. And then if you go to the column on the far right, you will see the total by cohort. And then in parenthesis, with the bottom fifteen percent of applicants in each cohort funded at forty percent. So they were the organizations that fell below this cutoff. There were thirty one of those in total. So we're funding a hundred and seventy four organizations at full capacity, as it were. And then thirty one of the applicants, the ones that fell below the cutoff are being funded at forty percent. And so that comes out to just under twenty million dollars. Any questions from the commissioners?
No questions.
Thank you, David. There are no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. I'm going to punt it back to Terrell now. He's going to speak to the, the new capacity building cohort.
Okay.
Thank you, David. So as we mentioned before, this year, we wanted to build on, can you guys hear me? Yeah. We wanted to build on capacity building within G O S. In the past, the only route into G O S is that you had to win a grant, a competitive grant in order to apply for G O S. This we found as a roadblock for some of our smaller organizations that may not have the funds to actually put on programming. So what we did was this capacity building cohort, this is for first time organizations who have never applied to, who have never received funding from the commission. So these are all first time grantees. We had a great number. If you can look, I'll walk you through the numbers here on your screen. We had twenty one applications. Out of the, out of those twenty one applications, we decided to fund nineteen. And the reason for our funding, we fund everyone that was above sixty percent.
And Terrell, Terrell, I apologize. I'm struggling to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a total of twenty one applications. From those twenty one applications, we, we actually awarded nineteen of the applications. So that's the first breakdown. You'll see there were, the second column shows the different disciplines. We have quite a few number of disciplines that they come from, that they align with. The third over, you can see the number of applicants that we had from each ward. So you can see those numbers there. And we represent across the different wards. Because this is the first year for the program, there's no F Y twenty three or F Y twenty four data to compare against. We decided to go with a flat funding model because we wanted to provide organizations with enough funds to do a project and some of the things they have, but also we wanted to provide mentorship so they could understand or get the support that they need during this first year. So we're awarding fifteen thousand. The recommendation is for fifteen thousand to nineteen brand new organizations to G O S. Any questions about that?
You all, this is a really entry point and we're looking at removing those barriers to access. And so this is, this is really responding to what the community has said and then I think what many of us have said. And I think this is only the beginning.
So Aaron, I'm sorry, similar to Terrell, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I was just saying, we want to congratulate the committee for recognizing and hearing from the community. And this is the first step at really recognizing the barriers to access and us actively removing them and equipping our grantees with the tools they need to really do, to do better and to enter the process. So congratulations to y'all doing this.
Thank you, Terrell. Thanks so much. Who's next?
Next up, we have our fellowship grant with Carrie Kaliba. Carrie, shoot.
Hey, Carrie.
Hello. I hope everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much. Hi, I'm Carrie Kaliba. I am a white woman with dark hair and wearing a purple shirt. And I will be presenting our Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program funding recommendations. So the, this is our Arts and Humanities Fellowship, or in some ways, our, our general operating support for individuals. This is a grant that does not require a specific project, but it supports our artists, teaching artists and humanities professionals across the city who significantly contribute to the arts and humanities culture and landscape of D C. So this F Y twenty five, we had another record breaking year as we have had for the last several years. We reviewed eight hundred and two eligible applicants, which was a just over twenty percent growth of last year where we reviewed six hundred and fifty nine applicants. And just as a little quick snapshot, since our F Y twenty cycle, we have more than doubled the size of this program from just under four hundred to now just over eight hundred applicants. So we've done a lot of work reaching out across the city, trying to get the word out and get more people involved in this program. So this year, we did review a higher number of applications and we are looking at hopefully awarding five hundred and fifty six of them. So as I, as I mentioned, we did see a significant increase in our applications and we did not have a significant increase in our budget. So kind of threading the needle of navigating that increase in our applications, some feedback we received from the community about changes to our funding structure from last year and our available, availability of funding. We did implement a higher cutoff line this year. We raised our award amounts to seven thousand dollars. They were five thousand five hundred dollars last year. And the highest scoring applicants in each of our panels received an additional five hundred dollars. So just some context, last year, we implemented a flat funding model change. And so we kept this for F Y twenty five. And then we used the, the raw scores and panelist feedback to, to set a cutoff line of approximately at the thirty percent or higher mark. And then we do have some additional reviews coming for the future of the fellowship program. We do have a survey coming out soon to help devise and revise what the F Y twenty six fellowship will look like. So yes, just some quick additional information about the growth of the program, looking to fund five hundred and fifty six folks out of eight hundred and two applicants. This is about sixty five percent of our applications. Last year, we were able to fund ninety four percent. But this year, with the restrictions on us, we are raising our cutoff line and funding five hundred and fifty six folks. And then just some additional information, we did have thirty five panels down there at the bottom. And this is our distribution of how many applications we saw in each of those cohorts. Any questions? Or do we have the, the distribution that we can look at, the the spreadsheet?
Pulling it up, Carrie.
Great. Thank you.
There is it. Okay.
All right, great. So this is our, our funding formula. So you can see where we, we implemented our cutoff. So you can see the number of applications we viewed for each application, for each discipline. Sorry. I suppose, so that, that center column, the long one, is the awards per discipline. It is distributed by panel. So we do not, so we keep all of our panels separated when we So we do not, so we keep all of our panels separated when we make the awards, so that we can make an equal distribution, but also honor our panelist feedback. You can see in the top left there, our formula of how we distributed the funds. And then in the top right is our award distribution per ward, which we track every year. We're looking at there at how many applications we receive per ward, and then where the award distribution state shakes out. This year, we've managed to maintain, like in previous years, roughly equal or roughly equivalent distribution of awards to applications. So if there were sixteen percent of our applications came from Ward One, and sixteen percent of our awards are going to Ward One. We have continued to see growth in the number of applications, but our proportions have remained relatively stable for the last several years. Any questions?
No, thank you so much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Next up, we have Robert with PEO.
That's performance events and festivals for organizations.
That's correct. Yep.
Hello, I'm just joining, oh, not joined, but just got into the, what's it called? I can share my, I'm here. All right, hello, everyone. My name is Robert Nunez. I am a black and Bolivian man with black curly hair. I'm wearing a floral print blazer and a red shirt representing CAH. And today, I'll be talking specifically about project events or festivals for organizations, but also some of this will be similar to the individual one, because it is for both organizations and individuals. And something just to, just to be aware of, sometimes I might refer to the organizations as "O", and then individuals as "I", just to reduce some of the words you might say between both programs. All right, so before we get started, one thing just to say as, that's something that's not specific for organizations, for ineligible, one of the big things is, if anyone is receiving the General Operating Support Grant, they would not be able to receive project events or festivals for organizations. Now, the timeline, when both grants were released, it was released at the same time. So there may be, it's, it is uncommon that there will be some people who will apply to both programs, but if they are receiving General Operating Support, they wouldn't be receiving project events or festivals. And then again, a quick reminder with project-based grants in general. CAH's project-based grants are competitive programs that are reviewed by peer-review panelists. On their criteria, which for project events or festivals, is the artistic content, IDA effort, district impact, and organizational management. Now, specifically for project events or festivals, the project events or festivals, and this is for both I and O, offers grant, offer, grant opportunities for qualified applicants, but for organization, it's nonprofit organizations, to deliver exemplary programs that promote arts and/or humanities activities to a diverse range of communities within the District of Columbia. So specifically for organizations, the maximum request can be up to twenty thousand dollars. And both, for both individuals and organizations, there's no matching required. One other thing, just to add, for the nonprofit organizations, they could be arts and humanities-related, as in their organization is arts and humanities-based, or they may not be arts and humanities-based, but the proposed project that they're wanting to do is arts and humanities-based. The goal of the program is providing access to high-quality arts and humanities experience for all District of Columbia residents, improve quality of life by supporting vibrant community projects within the arts and humanities, and strengthen the economy through investments in local individuals and organizations. Now to talk about the budget, we are looking at funding an amount of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is a decrease from last year. Part, again, is from the budget cut, but then also being able to fund as many, still trying to keep, you know, funding as many people as possible. A bit of comparison between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Overall, for twenty-five, we had forty-eight applications that went to panel. Thirty-four will be awarded, or proposed to be awarded. Compared to last year, having sixty-seven applications that went to panel and fifty-four that were awarded. If you can scroll to the next page, continue on with the difference between last year and this year. We had three workshops for this year, which I believe is the same as last year. And again, we still offer the, the option of reviewing the workshops recording. Of the forty-eight applications, seven of them will be receiving general operating support. We also looked at the incomplete application, just to make sure that something could have been moved to the funding, not moved to the panel phase, in case if everything was fine, but technical issues. But thirty-one were deemed incomplete due to either the applications being blank, or there could have been a duplication in the application. So they had started one, submitted that, but there was another one that was started, but that wasn't submitted, because they submitted one already. And then as a reminder, with the new General Operating Support Cohort, that since that allows for new applicants to apply for that cohort, that also probably was the reason why we also had another decrease, because they also had the option of choosing that as well. Something new that I wanted to test out, as well as a few other people as well, that we offered open office hours for our panelists. This is during, obviously during the process of the review process, but it just allowed opportunities to, again, connect with our panelists. If there's any kind of question that they might have, that's more immediate, or having any technical issues, just giving a chance to connect and to help anyone throughout that process. Now for the award formulations. The raw scores are used to determine the ranking. So this is the scores from our panelists, the average total points scored. The ranking percentage is created and applied proportionally across two panel cohorts. The maximum and minimum award amounts are determined based on the budget of that figure of four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. The grant managers, or for me, adjusted the formulas for each panel cohort based off of both the natural break and variance between, or within the rankings of that panel, as well as consulting with the panelist responses, because they were the ones who were obviously reviewing the applications. Now for the recommendations, as I mentioned earlier, thirty-four of the forty applications will be awarded. For funding range, forty of them would have been awarded, but since, again, six of them are receiving GOS of that ineligible process, that would, that's why we have thirty-four applications that are going to be awarded instead of forty. The maximum amount one will be receiving is sixteen thousand, and then not going less than sixty percent of what was requested. And again, this is just to help allow for more robust programming. And now we can go to the spreadsheet. All righty. So we'll go from the left side and then kind of move towards the right. So in the top middle, or the top, wait, the top-left section, this just shows the, the average score and where of the awardees range. So the average scored was around eighty-three, so of the awardees, twenty-two scored eighty-three or higher, and then eighteen scored eighty-three or lower, and that scores out of a hundred. Staying within that same column, but going into that middle, show the difference between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. Again, fifty-nine were awarded last year, forty being awarded this year, and just showing the difference there. And then continuing onward in that same column, the, the new versus existing grantees. So starting from the bottom, twelve of the awardees are going to be completely new to CAH, so welcome. Or willkommen in German. And then twenty-eight will be existing grantees. Now, the ones who are new to PEO, it's thirteen, so there was one additional to that, which means there's twenty-seven were previous PEO grantees. In the middle column, similar to what Carrie showed with the disciplines for the fellowship, we did the same thing for, for PEO. A few things to notice, there are a few where it shows, you know, X amount were awarded, and then another, and it, you know, maybe it might be the same. So for example, I believe the Folklife Traditional, it's one and one, but then there's no figure. That's showing that, that was someone who would have been in the awarded phase, but since they applied and receiving GOS, that, that's why it's showing that way. And then to the right column, showing the ward breakdown. So the first section on the left is showing of the people who applied, the breakdown of that, and then the percentage of how they relate altogether. The middle column is, again, showing the same thing, but this is of the ones who are being awarded. And then both of those just comparing to what happened last year for FY twenty-four awardees. Otherwise, any other questions?
Rachel, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Okay, Terrell, who's up?
I will be covering PEOI, which is the individual version of the PEO grant. So it's everything that Robert mentioned for the PEO organization grant, but this is for individuals with a max funding amount of ten thousand dollars. So if we take a look at, there we go. So if we take a look at FY twenty-four versus twenty-five, we have three PEO workshops. With the option, as Robert mentioned, we had open office hours, as well as the workshops were recorded. We saw an increase from FY twenty-four in applications from a hundred and nine to a hundred and twenty-nine in FY twenty-five. So that was going in the right direction. The proposed budget for this year is that we fund ninety-one of the hundred and twenty-nine applications. That's over the eighty-one that we funded last year. As you can see, there will be an increase in the funding amount, but there's also keeping with pace of what we did last year and bringing additional grantees into default. We had a total of seven panels this year for PEOI. Last year, we had five, so that speaks to the growth in applications. New applicants to CAH, these are applicants who never applied before, are thirty-two. Of those new applicants that are being funded, twenty-six brand-new applicants to CAH that we're looking, proposing to fund. And then we've increased the number of applications from applicants in ward seven and eight. This year, we have twenty-three applicants from those two wards. Last year, we only had fifteen, so that's an increase as well. And the award justification just goes through, we funded applications anywhere to between six percent to a hundred percent of their ask. Any questions about that piece? All right, let's switch over to the spreadsheet. So on the spreadsheet, we'll start left to right. As you can see, ninety-one percent of the applications score sixty percent or higher. We had thirty-eight applications that scored below the fifty-nine percentile. And that's how we come up with the hundred and twenty-nine, and how we funded the ninety-one applications. Again, it shows the number of panels that we had, seven panels. Each panel had either nineteen or eighteen people, and it shows the different awards from each panel and the total awards amount. The last column, if you take a look, it shows the different awards that the applicants came from. And then the second shows of those applicants and the different awards. It shows how mu, how many we actually funded. If you look at the table at the bottom, last year, we funded eighty-two. This year, we funded ninety-one. As you can see, last year, the funding percentile is seventy-five percent, which is a bit higher, but we have fewer applications, so that's why that percentile is higher than it is this year. But we're not far behind. We funded about seventy percent of the applicants. And that is the PEOI. Any questions about that one? Awesome. Next up, we will move over to Andrea with our FTE program.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Brown, Arts Learning Coordinator, as well as the Field Trip Experience. The Field Trip Experience Grant supports the cost-
Again, I'm sorry, Andrea. Could you speak more into the mic? Sorry.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'll introduce myself again. I am Andrea Brown. I'm the Arts Learning Coordinator, as well as the Grant Manager for Field Trip Experience Grant. The Field Trip Experience Grant supports the cost of tickets and professional development opportunities for classroom educators, as well as pre- and post-workshops for students within a district in grades K through twelve. Organizations applied for up to fifty thousand dollars, and there's no match requirement for this grant. Organizations in receipt of general operating support are restricted from receiving PEO, but they may receive one project grant, which includes FTE, East Arts, Public Art, Building Communities, and one Capacity Building Grant. So for FY twenty-four, there were twenty-five applicants, of which we awarded eighteen. And for FY twenty-five, there were twenty-six eligible applications, and we are proposing to fund eighteen as well. Our budget for FY twenty-five is five hundred thousand dollars. If you see on the screen there, in FY twenty-three, we funded five hundred fifty-nine, four hundred and ten awardees. FY twenty-four, four hundred ninety-eight, four hundred ninety-eight, nine hundred eighty-nine awardees. And we are proposing in FY twenty-five to fund five hundred thirty-seven, two hundred eighty-one. We held two panels this year. There were no new applicants. And again, I'm the grant manager. For the first cohort, there were eleven that applied for, that were awarded, we are intending to award for that cohort. And for the second cohort, which was middle to high school, there were fifteen that we reviewed. So for the first cohort, again, there was a clear break in scoring between applicants seven and eight. For our second cohort, there was a break-in variance scoring for applicants twelve and thirteen. And we are looking to propose for the first panel, which, that we would award seven applicants one hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred one dollars. And for the second panel, which was high school, we are looking to propose three hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars for a grand total of five hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars overall. This recommendation would include funding for eighteen Field Trip Experience applicants, seven residing in wards six, seven, and eight. If we can go to our recommendation summary. All right, so top-left corner, again, we held two panels for Field Trip Experience for FY twenty-five. There were seven out of eleven that we're looking to propose award, awards for. And for our second panel, there are eleven of fifteen that we're looking to propose awards for. FY twenty-four, we awarded eighteen grantees. We're looking to also award eighteen grantees for FY twenty-five. We did not have any new applicants this year, but we did have a substantial reduction in applications that were ineligible. And that was a result of those Monday meetings that we had, open office hours. But you will see a increase of those that applied- But you will see a uh increase of those that applied, and you'll see them show up on my colleague Marcia's uh Cohort for Arts Humanities Education Projects. Um, if you look in the center column there, you'll see the number of applicants for each discipline and how many were awarded uh for each uh discipline, as well as how much in, uh how much combined uh funding they will receive in that far-right corner uh column as well. Uh, on the left, on the right side, you'll see um the number of applicants and the total percentage of how many were awarded for each ward as well. Um, and we arrived at these uh totals based on variances and also the recommendations of uh our panel. So, the highest awarded uh will be receiving within ninety percent of their asking. And uh those who scored a bit or a bit on the lower side, but we're, are, we are still proposing to award, will receive uh no, no less than seventy percent of their asking. Uh, are there any questions?
No, thank you so much. Great work.
Thank you.
Next up, we're gonna have Aheb with Marcia.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Marcia Howard. I am an African-American female wearing a peach top and blue pants. Um, I'm going to talk about the recommendations for the Arts and Humanities Education Programs. We have in-school professional development arts partners and out-of-school time older adult education. Um, the grant program supports in-school and out-of-school time arts and humanities projects for youth in preschool through high school settings and older adults for uh fifty years and older. The grant also supports professional development opportunities for classroom educators. The project must target DC-based educators, instructional staff, or teaching artists. Maximum awards increased from twenty thousand in FY twenty-two to thirty thousand in FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, and will remain at thirty thousand through FY twenty-five. Organizations may apply for project support of up to thirty thousand dollars. There is no match required. Organizations in receipt of general operating support grants are restricted from receiving PEO, but may apply for one project-based grant and FTE, including FTE, East Arts Public Building, and One Capacity um Base Grant. For FY twenty-four versus FY twenty-five, um FY twenty-four eligible applicants with forty-eight with thirty-two awardees. For FY twenty-five eligible applicants were sixty-two with forty proposed um awardees. Allocated budget amount is six hundred thousand. Recommendation is six hundred ninety-six thousand, fifty-two dollars. And you can see the uh the breakdown under that for uh the proposed amounts from prior years, which was five ninety-six, five eighty-eight in two thousand twenty-three, and five eighty-six, nine eighty-eight from two thousand twenty-four. Um, we have three panels, um and the number of applicants was twelve. Um, and for, and I am the grant manager for the Arts and Humanities Education Project, the in-school panel, the out-of-school panel one, and out-of-school panel two. Cohort number one, in-school professional development, had twenty-one in their cohort, and out-of-school panel, which is out-of-school time and older adults, had forty. Um, the in-school panel, we had uh twenty-one. The out-of-school panel, number one, had twenty-three applicants, and the out-of-school panel, number two, had seventeen. The award justification and allo- um allocation of funds. The funding recommendations were determined using the following variances. Our in-school cohort number one, the cutoff um was between four number, applications number fourteen and fifteen for for three-point-zero uh variance in scoring. Out-of-school number one, panel one, uh the cutoff was between thirteen, number, applicant number thirteen and fourteen with a five-point-two point variance in scoring. And our um second out-of-school panel, number two, the cutoff was um between applicant fourteen and fifteen with a two-point-zero variance. The recommendation includes the funding for one professional development program, three older adult programs, and thirty-six in-school and out-of-school programs. The recommendation dollar amounts for cohort number one for in-school, um fund thirteen applicants at two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eighty-nine dollars. Uh, cor- cohort number one for out-of-school panel number one, recommendation, fund thirteen applicants at a hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And court, uh cohort number two for out-of-school panel, recommendation, fund fourteen applicants at two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven thirty-three with a recommendation total of six hundred ninety-six thousand and fifty-two dollars. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great job, Marcia. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And last but not least, I will be presenting East Arts on behalf of Khalid Randolph. So, I'll wait for... We are working Edward over here with all these documents, so he is keeping up with us. We appreciate you. Okay, so the East Arts Grants, just to um give you a little background on the program goes, it's to provide access to highly, high-quality arts and humanities experiences by organizations headquartered in the Northeast and Southeast quadrants of the district, or organizations based on the merits of their work determined by a panel and peer reviewers. Um, support project applications submitted by both arts humanities and non-art humanities organization. So, this is a program that we've seen some growth this past year as well. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, we awarded uh thirty-six um organizations. This year, we received forty-one applicants. The... So, that's the growth from the FY twenty-four to twenty-five. If we go to the next page, I wanted to, one of the things that they wanted, asked to do this year for East Arts, because we had such close scoring between the two panels that were held, is this recommendation was to fund all of the panelists. So, this year, uh we will be funding all forty-one applications in East Arts. The funding range will be between one hundred percent and sixty-five percent. So, depending on where the scores landed, will be the different uh funding amounts. Um, I'm gonna switch over to the spreadsheet and kind of walk you through that a little bit. So, as you can see, we had ninety um eight applications had at least ninety-one percent. Twenty-one applications had between eighty-one and ninety. Eleven applications scored somewhere between seventy and eighty. We had one application-
The volume is getting lower and lower.
I'm s- I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is this better? Okay.
Yes, thanks.
So, just one more time, really quick, I'll recap that. Um, we had ninety-one percent that scored, I'm sorry, eight applications that scored ninety-one percent, twenty-one applications between um eighty-one and ninety, eleven applications between seventy and eighty, and one application um with a sixty-nine percent. Um, FY twenty-three, the total award award funding was thirty-three, FY twenty-four was thirty-five. Like I said, this year, we're looking at forty-one. Um, you can see the different disciplines that they are funding in. Um, if you take a look at the awards per ward, you'll see that East Arts um has award eight, seventeen um were applied in Ward eight, seventeen were funded, thirteen applied in Ward seven, thirteen were funded, and so on and so forth. So, the total of forty-one. Uh, previous grantees were thirty-five. This year, we had six brand-new grantees applied to the grant. So, that means six grantees who had never applied for East Arts were able to not only apply for it, but actually receive the funding. And that is our recommendation for East Arts. Any questions on that one?
Great job. Um, again, I need to thank you for the twentieth time, but seriously, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of sessions. It's a lot of everything, you know. Um, for those of you on the um, on the call, when we do our um panelist call, we would really appreciate as many of you as have time to come and be a panelist so that you really understand um what our grants managers have to, to go through and how much work it is, but also how thankful we will be to you if you become one of those panelists. That's wonderful. Um, what I'd like to do at this point, if there are no questions from the commissioners, is to propose that um the recommendations from the grants team be accepted as presented.
Good. With that, I can take it to the vote. Thank you, Gretchen. Um, if you're in favor of the resolution, say yes. If not, say no. Uh, Cora Missisberry?
Abstain.
Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius?
Yes.
Cecily? Janice?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yeah.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector? Is Hector with us?
Was.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Hector was a yes?
Yes, yes.
Good. Gretchen?
Yes.
Has passed. It's congratulations.
Thank you very much. Um, again, thank you to all of the grants managers. For those of you in the audience, if you have any suggestions, comments, or anything that you would like to get to us, we do have what we call an Grants Revamp that'll be held in November. So, I'd like you to send a little note with a bullet or so to your um, the particular grants manager, just so that they'll have an idea of what you, the community, thinks we need to do differently for the next grant cycle season. We'll be doing that in November, so send them a little note and um probably um mid-October, um if you have any suggestions or recommendations for us. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, let me just echo the accolades to the grants team in general and to the grants committee as well. Um, and if you would indulge me as chairman to do a little bit of a commercial here. At the end of the day, we are a grant-making organization. We have other things we do, but that's the core of what we do. And I'm proud to say that in these last three years, we've con- constantly increased the number of applications with a noticeable increase in the number of new applicants uh applying this equity lens that we set out to do from the beginning. We've shifted the narrative. More people are aware of and optimistic about the possibilities of getting a grant from this organization. We paid attention to the distribution of these grants across the wards to ensure equity there. We've upheld the quality of the criteria while funding as many as were financially possible. This is an amazing feat for this team. Congratulations. It is what we sought, sought out to do. This is what we're doing for our constituents. Uh, people are feeling it. I get many comments as I walk around in the city of how this feels more equitable, where people feel they have an opportunity they may not have had before. They still have to compete. They still have to bring the quality, but they are aware of it. They feel like they are getting help from us for those things, and we can help them with clean hands, et cetera. So, again, my accolades to the grants team, my accolades to the grants committee, to the commission. This is the work we set out to do. So, thank you. Thank you for allowing me that commercial. Uh, Carla, can we go to the Public Art Committee?
Sure can. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to provide an update on the recent Public Arts Committee meeting that we had last Thursday, September the nineteenth. It was during that meeting that our public arts staff presented three distinct grant opportunities for the committee's consideration, along with uh general updates on our ongoing public arts programs and activities. The three grant lines under review were the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant, the Art Bank Program Grant, and the Public Arts, Public Art Building Communities Grant. I'm pleased to report that after thorough discussion, all three were unanimously supported by the Public Arts Committee. Uh, we're excited to bring these grant opportunities forward for you this evening uh for your consideration. You'll ca- you'll hear from our team that the quality of the applicants received was exceptionally high, and as Reggie stated, we had a lot of uh new applicants. This is due in part to the robust outreach process conducted by our public art team. They provided direct support to potential applicants, which helped ensure greater eligibility and participation in our grants programs. Following the initial engagement around the request for applications, our public art team assembled panels of experts to conduct rigorous reviews of all the submissions. This process has helped us identify the truly outstanding candidates for these grants. At this point, I'd like to invite our public arts managers uh manager to provide more detail about these grant lines and the selection process. Corinne, the floor is yours.
You, Commissioner Sims. Hi, everyone. I'm Corinne Miller. I'm the Public Arts Manager. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a white woman with gray hair, and I'm wearing a black dress, and I'm very pleased to be here this evening. As Commissioner Sims mentioned, we have three grant lines that we will be presenting, all of which took a tremendous amount of effort and the thoughtful care of our stellar public arts team. I also want to mention that we have a report in your packet that outlines some of the key programs and activities beyond these three grant lines. Our team has been very busy, and I'm grateful for their efforts. As Director Myers mentioned, I also just want to make sure everyone knows about the DC Art Now exhibition in the gallery. We have an opening reception in the gallery tomorrow evening from five to nine as part of our Art All Night festivities. The exhibition features artworks from sixty-three different artists working in a range of media and bringing together diverse and dynamic subject matter and themes. All of the exhibited artists are finalists in our Art Bank Program. Our curator, Dr. Michelle May Curry, will start out with our Art Exhibitions Curatorial Grant Program, and then will present the Art Bank Program. Following that, Carrie Kennedy, our Public Art Coordinator, will present our Public Art Building Communities Grant Line. So, Michelle, I'll let you take it away with our Art Exhibitions Curatorial Grant Program.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle May Curry. I'm the curator on staff and grant manager for um the Art Exhibition Grant Program. I'm a black and white woman with curly hair and a gray sweater on tonight. Um, the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program, or AEG, provides support for the development and public presentation of visual arts exhibitions by district resident curators through grant support and use of CAH's exhibition space within the district's owned building lobby, our I Street Gallery, and CAH's virtual platforms. Applicants must be individuals or organizations with prior curatorial experience. Um, this year, three exhibition pro- proposals will receive grants for curation and installation um around three themes. So, in the winter of twenty-twenty-five, we will have a social justice arts-themed exhibition. In the spring of twenty-twenty-five, we will have a veterans' arts exhibition. And in the summer, we will have a world pride exhibition in conjunction with World Pride being hosted in DC this year. We had one panel this cycle, and we did not have a uh cycle last year um in order to improve the, the grant program and revise the RFA so that it was more inclusive. Um, all, this year, all twelve eligible applications were reviewed and scored by panelists in an online review of portfolios on a scale of one to ten. And the highest one per thematic category was um accepted. This year, funding is available to support the recommendation of one exhibition to, one exhibition proposal per category um at thirty-five thousand dollars for a total of three exhibitions and a hundred and five, a hundred and five thousand dollars in total. Um, a little bit on outreach and observations. Um, applications increased by six hundred and fifty percent from FY twenty-three um due to revisions that we made in FY twenty-four to the RFA. Um, this year, we received fifteen total applications, and in FY twenty-three, we received- This year, we received fifteen total applications and in FY twenty-three, we received two applications. So here's some of the revisions we made to the RFA that likely impacted that increase. First, our thematic curatorial emphases likely appealed to specific demographics and community groups that encouraged them to apply. Second, we made organizations eligible for consideration, which in previous years, they were not eligible. We also decreased the requirements at the application stage, including making a full exhibition checklist and exhibition rendering optional rather than required at the stage of application. And then at the end, we included an appendix indicating a list of available CAH gallery equipment that we could lend to independent curators to use in the gallery. And that included things like pedestals, TV monitors, storage facilities for artwork, and communication support. We also increased our outreach by circulating flyers across local nonprofit organizations, our business improvement districts, and Main Street organizations. Sent many personal invitations to curators to apply for the grant line and lots of one-on-one meetings with prospective applicants as well as three grant application workshops. We can move over to the funding recommendation spreadsheet. So you'll see the three proposed exhibitions funded in green here, as well as their applicant ward and the average total points scored. So the top scored application per thematic category. Happy to answer any questions.
Just call, I can call you back, but Lelena?
I think we got some extra noise on there, but do you want to move along to, we can do Art Bank Program next unless there's questions?
All right. If there's no other questions, I'll move along to our Art Bank Program. So in support of local visual artists and art nonprofit organizations, CAH acquires fine art. The ongoing and annual acquisition of art from metropolitan artists becomes a part of our Art Bank collection. Artwork in the collection is managed by the Public Art Department of CAH and loaned to district government agencies for display in public areas and offices of government buildings. The Art Bank Collection, which started in nineteen eighty-six, has over three thousand artworks in various media. For the purpose of this grant, metropolitan artist is defined as a legal resident of Washington DC or a legal resident of within a fifty-mile radius of DC boundaries for at least one year prior to application deadline. Award amounts to metropolitan artists vary, but eligible applications, eligible applicants can be awarded up to fifteen thousand dollars for individuals and up to twenty thousand dollars for nonprofit arts galleries, organizations. This program's goals include gathering or collecting art to reflect the rich, diverse artistic history in communities of the District of Columbia and metropolitan region. It's also a mechanism for providing support and exposure as well as professional development for visual artists in the region. And then also enhancing the aesthetic experience for district government employees and visitors to access the District of Columbia government buildings. This year, we had four panels and all eligible applications were reviewed in an online review of portfolios on a scale of one to ten. Panelists then recommended select works for in-person finalist round review with a standard cutoff of roughly seven. In a second round in-person review, all a hundred and eleven finalist works were reviewed. Panelists then made recommendations based on a yes, no, or maybe judgment. Then the Public Art Team reviewed all recommendations from the panels. In some instances, the Public Art Team may recommend that a work be added or removed from the list of recommended works. This is based upon the criteria as defined in the RFA, including things like suitability for the public collection, whether the work is redundant or existing works in the collection, and any conservation or framing or maintenance concerns. In terms of allocation of funds this year, funding is available to support the recommendation of sixty-eight artists' works and the total acquisition of seventy-seven artworks. Artists are funded up in full based on their, the allowable amount by cohort. So that's up to fifteen thousand dollars for, for individuals and again, twenty thousand for organizations. And the total recommended request is three hundred and eighty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars. Some outreach and observation. There was a twenty-one percent increase in completed applications between FY twenty-four and twenty-five from two hundred and thirty-five applications to two hundred and eighty-nine. This year, we saw an increase in first-time applications, specifically a thirteen percent increase from a hundred and three applications this year in comparison to sixty-seven last year. Something I want to note here and really emphasize is that there was a dramatic decrease in the number of ineligible applications due to outreach efforts to applicants after the application deadline. So an eligibility review of missing and incomplete documents and targeted outreach reduced the number of ineligible applications from seventy-five to five. In comparison to last year, we had ninety-seven total ineligible applicants. So among this year's recommended artists, there are nineteen artists that are new to our Art Bank Collection, which meets our goal of at least twenty-five percent of our acquisitions being artists who are new to our collection. And sixty-one percent of our finalists were accepted. Majority of applicants are from the District of Columbia, with Maryland and Virginia applicants trailing respectively. And you can see a little bit more on ward distribution there. Highest number came from Ward Five as well as Ward One. In twenty twenty-three, we also added additional focus to highlight the artist's contribution to the arts in DC. We included a new impact statement that gives artists an opportunity to further detail how their career and work commits to the growth of arts in DC. And this has really proved impactful in bringing, in shaping a diverse pool committed to the DC arts ecosystem. And you see this also reflected in the thematic content of the art we're bringing in. A really strong diversity of perspectives are included, including depictions of queer and trans people, black and brown children and families, world histories, varied cultures, impacts of incarceration, among many, many other thematic categories. We did lots of outreach in order to make this happen, including many of the same mechanisms we used for Art Exhibition Grant Line, including one-page flyers, personalized emails, one-on-one meetings, and workshops for applicants. You can scroll down and see the distribution across the various wards. I'm happy to move over to the funding recommendation spreadsheet.
Hard, hard to hear again, sorry.
We can move over to the funding recommendation spreadsheet at this time. Just scroll down. Keep on keeping on. Exactly. Thanks. Happy to answer any questions.
If there aren't any questions, we can move on to Carrie Kennedy, who's going to present our Public Art Building Communities Grant Program.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Kennedy. I am the Public Art Building Communities Grant Manager and I'm an African-American woman with a beige top on. The Public Art Building Communities Grant supports individual artists and organizations, eligible projects, support designing, fabrication, and installing new, permanent, or temporary works that connect artists and their artwork with communities. The grant is open to experienced artists or arts-related professionals, eighteen years of age or older, and a current resident of Washington DC, as well as DC-based nonprofit five-oh-one, C-three organizations, or DC Business Improvement District organizations. As defined by the Department of Small and Local Business Development, organizations are not required to demonstrate a one-on-one cash match, but organizations often do apply with additional funding that they've secured. For this grant, public art is defined as artwork cited and installed onto locations that fulfill three criteria. The locations must be accessible to the public without cost, located in an exterior outdoor location free of encumbrances. The artwork must be cited and installed onto locations that are accessible and viewable from public space. Materials should be sustainable, low-maintenance, and protected by graffiti-resistant coatings. Public art projects are defined as existing, I'm sorry, permanent public art projects are defined as existing for a duration of two or more years without a deinstallation plan and works must, again, require minimal routine maintenance. Temporary public art projects are defined as existing for less than two years with a deinstallation plan. Number of cycles: one. Our allocated budget amount for FY twenty-twenty-five is three hundred and ninety-two thousand and eighty-five dollars for three projects. FY twenty-four, we had four projects and in FY twenty-twenty-three, there were five projects. The number of panels were one. The ranking and award justification: all eligible applications were reviewed. Eligible, eligible scores above eighty-two are recommended for funding. The highest project scored eighty-seven point twelve and there was a variance of point six-two for the next applicant. The panel recommended the ranking of the top highest scores. Allocation of funds: funding is available to support the recommended projects, three proposals from organizations or bids. Public art projects are funded in total based on applicants' requests up to the maximum allowable amount by cohort. Again, there were three orgs or bids for a total of three hundred and ninety-two thousand eighty-five dollars. For outreach and observations, there was an eight-point-three increase in completed applications between twenty-four and twenty-five and outreach efforts increased through five public art workshops, live chats, one in-person onsite workshop that was held at the Anachina Stia Arts Center, two onsite community outreach meetings, numerous one-on-one meetings with calls with prospective applicants, and also email blasts and newsletter mentions during the grant application period. The committee recommendation is as follows.
If there's any questions, we can take questions? And you want to share the, if you keep scrolling down, you can share the spreadsheet?
So here we have the top three applicants in green with the average total points scored, their variance, their applicant ward, the project ward, and the total project budget with requested amounts.
Thanks, Carrie. Any questions about any of the three grant lines? And if not, I can, I think I can pass it back to Commissioner Sims.
Thank you. Carla?
Yes, yes. At this point, I'd like to bring it to the board for vote. Chairman Lee, I move the adoption of the following resolution. Resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendations for FY twenty-twenty-five Art Exhibition Curatorial Program Grant as presented for a total funding amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars.
Thank you. I'll go through the roll. And if you're in favor, yes. If not, then no. Cora Massesberry?
Yes.
Julianne Mal, Julianne, how's it going, Julianne Malvo, sorry. Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius?
Yes.
Cecily? Janice? Janice, is Janice still with us? Chase?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Carla? Obviously, you, you submitted it. Hector?
I'm sorry. I was on mute. Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
And I'll give Janice a chance, is Janice back? But he does pass. Thank you, thank you. And similar to my, my comments with the grants committee, my accolades to the public art team and to the committee. The breadth of our grants and our community engagement is fantastic. Great job for everyone. This is a long meeting, but it's wonderful when you look at the number of our constituents that we are positively impacting through the hard work of, of these teams here. So, so thank you very much for that. Any other questions from the commissioners before we go into the next committee?
Well, no, we have two more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to rush you. Sorry.
No problem. We'll go through this quickly. I move the adoption of the following resolution. Resolve that the commission adopt the funding, oh, I'm sorry, that's the one I already did. I made the following resolution. Resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendation for FY twenty-twenty-five Art Exhibition. Hold on, I'm sorry.
Art Bank.
Program as presented for a total funding of three hundred and eighty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'll go through it again. The roll call. Yes, if you're in favor, no if you aren't. Cora?
Yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius?
Yes.
Cecily? Janice? Chase?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Then the final one. Final resolution. Resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendations for FY twenty-twenty-five Public Art Building Communities Grant as presented for a total funding amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand eighty-five dollars.
I'll take the vote again. Cora? Cora?
Yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Demetrius?
Yes.
Cecily? Janice? Chase?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Thank you. It passes. Anything else, Carla?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Sorry to have cut it short before. But again, my thanks to the entire Public Art Team and to the Public Art Committee as well. Onto governance. Julianne?
Right. Good evening. My name is Julianne Brienza. I am the commissioner for Ward, oh. Am I muted?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Julianne.
I'm so sorry.
No, I'm, I'm, Julianne, I'm sorry. I missed something else was add. Following on the Public Art Committee report, we talked about our Art Bank opening as part of Art All Night. But Erin, could you talk about our broader engagement and support of Art All Night in addition to the Art Bank opening?
Yes. What many people may not know is that CAH is a huge contributor to Art All Night. This year, we provided three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars toward the entity of Art All Night and we remain a resource there to the Office of DSLBD to support them in ways and seeing Art All Night in being a success. This year, we will be visible at Shaw. I know Gretchen will be ensuring that's going to be awesome. We'll be at MLK Library. I was with the director of the library yesterday. And then also, we will be in Congress Heights. So we are looking forward to supporting Art All Night the best way we can moving forward.
Thank you, thank you. And then numerous proj, I'm sorry.
Just as, just as an addition, our Shaw event this year, Shaw, remember, is where Art All Night started, but we're doing it kind of in conjunction with Events DC, so it's going to be a huge installation this time.
Great, great. So please, everybody, support Art All Night. I'll be roaming around myself. One other thing, we have many important projects the Public Art Team does, but I know there's been much conversation and great interest in the public about the Marion Berry mural. So I'm wondering, Corinne, if you could just say a few words about where we are with the Marion Berry mural?
Sure. So our team's been working very closely with the creative team, working on that project. Right now, they're on track to finish and deliver the project. We're looking at an early November installation date of the mural, so. And look forward to getting together a dedication date and getting that out to the commission and the public.
Great. Thank you, thank you. So again, I'm, I'm sorry, Julianne, to have cut you off, but now let's go to governance.
All right. My name is Julianne Brienza. I am the commissioner for Ward Six. I am a white woman of Italian and Irish heritage.
and my cat's here too. She's a, she's just a a mix of a cat. She's really nothing, nothing distinct. All right, uh if you wanna go ahead and share the governance committee report, it's the end of our fiscal year, so I want to resolve um say what's resolved and say what's unresolved. So let's start with what's unresolved. A resolution that was put forth uh before the board dated July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. This was the resolution that authorized the expansion and extension of the come, of the the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three strategic plan through the end of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, which is right now, September. Um Erin did uh outline uh where it is in the contracting process, but just to clarify, with a resolution, we need to either extend it, modify it, or close it. So what I am gonna ask is that um Erin and Reggie as the chair, that we confirm with one another before the October meeting and figure out the proper language to extend this resolution so that we can have it, you know, kind of close this out and figure out how to either when the str- the strategic plan is going to occur, or if we're gonna wait an entire another fiscal year in order to get a contract. So I look forward to working with both of you to resolve that issue. The second unresolved issue is that um in the bylaw amendments that we passed in August, um it was outlined that we were going to start taking minutes and putting them on our website, um which is required by FOI- by FOIA to do that for the agency. Um it was outlined um that the staff was going to kind of get a contracting service. Um it's still, we still have been going back and forth. So I look forward to resolving that for the first fiscal meeting, uh the first meeting of our new fiscal year so that we can present the minutes on the website. Um things that are resolved, uh the resolution dated December eighteenth, which was the resolution to form the special committee uh to explore the creation or partnership of a foundation. Um Chase will be presenting all of that later in in this meeting, and that meeting will be dissolved on October first. The other resolution that we entered into at the same time was the special committee to explore the creation of a week-long art fair, tentatively named Art Week two thousand twenty-five. I have confirmed with the chairman, and we will be making um edits to that, and that will be extended for another fiscal year, and we will have that in front of us at the next meeting.
And and one correction, it's actually Art Week DC twenty twenty-five.
Okay, well, I guess that's another thing we're gonna, we're gonna update in the new resolution then.
Yes.
Art Week DC.
Yes, yes. Don't forget DC.
Okay. Uh all right, some open items. Um again, as we approved the uh bylaw amendments in the, at the August meeting, part of that was to do a blind survey for the executive director performance review. I'm really happy to report that that has been distributed um as of Wednesday, September eighteenth, and while the report says fifty percent board participation, it's actually seventy-two percent now. Um so thank you for all of those, all of the board members that have taken time to complete that and fulfill that part of our service. Um again, August nineteenth, when we approved those bylaw amendments, uh another thing is that the board committees will be presenting an um annual scheduling. Um so hopefully, when we set the schedule and we do our first committee meetings of the year, that will be on on your docket to to set that schedule and then share that um in your report for your com- first committee, the first committee meeting of the fiscal year. The final thing that I have, um which is a different document, so you're gonna wanna go to share the Bega. Uh as the commissioners know, we did, we did lose a commissioner um since our last meeting in August, um and that was due to it being, our our Ward Seven commissioner did receive grants as an individual, and Bega did rule that that was um I guess, not not appropriate. Um and so, do you wanna share that that ruling, whoever is doing that? I don't know if that's.
I was gonna talk about Amy's departure at the end. I'll cover that.
Okay, so, well, I guess it if, I guess for the public, then it is on the website, the ruling that was received. Um and I guess Reggie will, Reggie will go through that at that time, but I hope that this can be recorded into the institutional memory of the agency so that we don't have any other commissioners that have to go through this. All right, thank you. That is all the governance committee has to report today.
Thank you, thank you. And governance work is a thankless task. It is tedious, it takes forever, it ruminates, but thank you so much and your committee for the hard work to get us through this. This is important that we have good governance at the commission, so thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for that. Questions or comments from anyone? If not?
I just wanna, that I agree with you. She's doing a great job. This is a very, very necessary aspect of what we do. So, uh good job, Julianne.
I appreciate that, Cora, thank you.
And don't worry, Julianne, we'll find another thankless task for you.
Let's, let's keep it, let's keep it chill.
Just kidding, just kidding. Uh so good, we'll go on to the idea committee report, and as the interim committee chair, I'll make that report, but it will be brief. And again, in the, in asking for some chairman's privilege, this has been quite a journey. In January of two thousand twenty-one, the Task Force on Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging presented forty-four recommendations to the Arts Commission uh that were, it was presented actually in December of two thousand twenty, and it was voted upon unanimously by the commission in January of two thousand twenty-one. It's taken three years, but I'm happy to report that forty-three of the forty-four task force recommendations are either complete or in progress. The one recommendation that's up for discussion today and is on the agenda is around creating a panelist committee as a standing committee. And there's been some history around that, and I think Gretchen can help us step through that, but but that's the one remaining issue of the forty-four initial recommendations. Uh and so I I wanted to applaud all of us who have worked through that because the staff have had to take on those various recommendations and one by one do the work so that they're either put into continuous movement, or they are completed in some form or fashion. So it really is a congratulations and a thanks to everyone who's participated in the process. Uh so the idea committee will move on with a new set of things that we want to work on with a new set of staff because we've had some staff movements as well, but uh we are proud to say that those forty-four recommendations have been dealt with with the exception of just one that we will talk about today. Uh anybody else on the idea committee, or anyone else who wants to comment um comment on uh that committee's report? Gretchen? We can't hear you, Gretchen, you're muted.
Sorry, that last recommendation really has been completed. Um I've asked the staff to reach out and talk to each other about a panelist committee. We had one of those about ten years ago, quite frankly, because we were trying to get a number of panelists. We do now have a panelist call, and that is put out to everyone, it's put out to the public, to the commissioners, to everyone. Um the number of panelists we've had and the um not just the number of panelists, but the panelists we've had recently in the past couple of years, two years specifically, has been completely in line with what our recommendation was from that ID, from the idea committee and from the original recommendations. So I don't see that as outstanding, quite frankly, and I had this conversation with um um Terrell with the team, and we've gone over the numbers, so we have actually really achieved that goal.
Great. So all forty-four?
Yes.
Delted with.
Yes.
Taken three years, but all forty-four, and and not all forty-four were done in three years. Some were done initially, immediately, and over time. So thank you, thank you for that correction. So to let the record show that that task force's work was implemented in one form or another, and now we can pick up whatever new set of issues the idea uh team would want to pick up. Um with that, I'll go on to the special committee update. Uh I'll let Chase go first with the foundation update. Is Chase with us? You're muted, Chase.
Can someone just unmute him? He's having issues.
They're, they're working with him, give him one second.
I mean, I can go on with Art Week DC if you wish.
So he can, so he can fix his issues. You go ahead.
Okay, so I'll go on with the Art Week DC two thousand twenty-five update. Um again, I bring a historical context to this. Two years ago, we started the pre-work on this concept. A delegation comprised of some members of the mayor's office and some members of CAH went to Art Basel in December of two thousand twenty-two. Another delegation went in two thousand twenty-three, and we actually hosted an event in Miami for DC people who were in DC, who were in Miami for Art Basel. Um we've had over one hundred of our constituents across probably a dozen stakeholder meetings uh to talk through the whole notion of this event and arrived at the fact that the demand for such an event and the support of such an event are there, and now the question is, how do we do it? This concept of an international art event that is both.
Excuse me, Reggie, um Chase just sent me a note. He had to switch to dial-in.
Okay.
So, um.
I will, I will pick up uh him once I finish the Art Week DC report.
Okay, somebody's gonna have to let him in, thank you.
Okay, somebody, please do let him in. Uh as I was saying, this, this uh international art event is something that both supports being artist-centric, which is something that many don't see in some of these other art fairs, but also an economic driver for the District of Columbia. We feel we can accomplish both of those in the same, in the same effort. Um this year, we are planning a final stakeholder meeting in the fall to work with our constituents, those who were invited to the various stakeholder meetings, to begin to co-create with us what this this event will be. We decided that the only thing we'll do around Art Week DC this year would be that event. We would not try to do anything else, would not try to do a taste test or a preliminary or any of that, but rather to work with our stakeholders that have already given us input and feedback, and to try to co-create with them what this event will be starting next year or two thousand twenty-six. Uh we are hiring a highly qualified consultant to help drive the creation of the plan that starts with this co-creation with the stakeholders, uh and again, the plan is to implement this in the twenty-five, twenty-six timeframe. Again, a lot of our council is been, don't rush it, do it correctly, do it in a finite, sustainable way, so we will do twenty-five and twenty-six as a launch. And I'm proud to say there's an event that's actually happening this Saturday, and we talked about it, I think, in our last meeting, where we have a number of ambassadors in New York City who are there for the United Nations General Assembly, including Ambassador Linda Thomas-Greenfield, who is the US Ambassador to the United Nations, to come together and for us to begin to tell them about our plans for this event, and to get international support to attend the event next year, not wait until then, but to do this now. I'm happy to say that Mayor Merrill Bowser will be there as well in speaking. Um our city councilman, Zach Parker, is planning to come as well. We have a number of people from the art community that are coming as well, but this is our first sort of salvo towards beginning to talk about this international event with an international audience and taking advantage of the fact that they are there in New York now for the UN General Assembly. So that is the uh report for Art Week DC two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Uh we continue to be excited about the prospects. We wanna do it in a way that is doable, that is scalable over time, that does a good job initially instead of trying to do too much at one time, but is purposeful in moving this ahead. Uh others who may be on that committee, or anybody else who wanna comment or questions? If not, uh is Chase with us now?
I am, can you hear me?
We can hear you, so why don't you give the foundation report?
Thanks, everybody, for bearing with my wifi. Um uh Chase Magiano, commissioner from Ward Three again, and I'm so proud to be here talking about this uh set of recommendations that the foundation committee has put forward. I won't go through every detail, nor will I go through every detail of the process because we have done a lot of sort of process updates uh throughout the months that we've been working on this to the commission. I'll just give a big, huge thanks to the committee members who did a mammoth uh effort at reaching out to their own networks within the city and around the country to poring through tons of data uh of different stakeholder uh surveys that we that we've done over the past, as well as reaching out to other funding entities around the country that are doing similar kinds of work. So I'll move on to quickly try to summarize what we have recommended. There is no uh, there's no action that the, that we are asking the commission to take. This is simply a report that is being submitted. The foundation committee has been working since January to discern the following. Identify what needs of what the Washington DC cultural community are unmet and could be served by a private foundation to seek legal and legislative legislative clarity on the relationship between a private foundation and CAH and to provide recommendations based on models in and outside of Washington. So as I mentioned, we have produced a final set of recommendations, which is in, and that, the the full recommendation is included in the meeting documents and available publicly. Today, I'll summarize the key points. Neither the committee nor CAH is charged with starting a foundation. I wanna be very clear about that. So any foundation entity is hypothetical at this point, but for ease of our conversation, I'll simply refer to the potential foundation as the foundation. The committee realizes the benefit of more cultural funding in the district as well as the benefit of a foundation which has some level of formal relationship with CAH. The committee recognizes that many other arts agencies have such relationships, and that we would not be starting from scratch, but rather catching up to the innovative funding models that we see around the country. Through consist, through constituent survey data and with research and discussions with other public and private funding relationships around the country, as well as in the district, we are recommending that the foundation focus on prior, on the following priorities in order to best meet the unmet or undermet needs of the cultural community locally. Number one, provide funding for large cultural events serving Washington DC, which expose the district's art scene to a broader audience while providing an economic boost to the local cultural economy. Number two, fill the gaps of public cultural funding beyond what CAH can provide with direct grant support as well as administrative support, including fiscal sponsorship, to artists and organizations serving the district. Number three, serve as a convener in the regional art philanthropy space, bridging stronger connections and education to benefit artists and funders. Now, the committee also recommends some restraints on the foundation. With strong feedback from the community, the committee recommend recommends that the foundation ensures every donor to it will commit only new funds, creating an additive funding culture rather than effectively calling, uh cutting into existing funding for arts or artists or organizations. The committee does not recommend that the foundation provide any programmatic on the CAH beyond the possibility of uh funding for shared spaces, shared rentals, similar operational expenses like that. To learn some of these best practices, some of the ways that we came to these conclusions, we looked at the most uh at different models around the country and locally. Most closely, we looked at the DC Library Foundation here, the Greater Philadelphia Cultural Alliance, the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs, and the Fund for New York, for the City of New York. In particular, the committee looks to the DC Library Foundation as a model because it already exists within the legal framework of the city. While the Library Foundation and the DC Library System are legally separate entities, a similar public and private relationship with CAH could be based primarily on shared information and may extend as far as shared space as allowable by DC regulations governing CAH. Shared space as with the, with the Library Foundation would facilitate communication and cohesion. As far as a governance relationship is concerned, the committee recommends that a non-voting ex officio position on the board of the foundation be reserved for whome- whomever is occupying the CAH chair position. This relationship has already been given a go-ahead ruling by Bega. One thing to note that we've discussed a lot on fiscal sponsorships, the fact that many organizations and culture makers. The fact that many organizations and culture makers are not able to apply for grants due to a lack of five oh one C three status creates a great opportunity for a foundation to serve as fiscal sponsor and grant applications for various funders. The committee recognizes that CAH is currently examining its own fiscal sponsor policy and leaves that examination up to a permanent committee of the CAH. It's not within our wheelhouse to, to comment on that. My, my own personal feeling as a commissioner is that CAH should clarify, uh, clarify their policies and, and open up its fiscal sponsor policy to reach as many artists as possible. Now, the next step of this, uh, endeavor does not, is not actually the charge of the committee. Uh, the next step is to find a home for this work. We will make available any and all materials selected for this report, provide guidance of thought, and endeavors to support this work as allowable within the CAH ethics guidelines. We believe in an abundance philosophy of funding that more support, which is strategically aligned with, uh, will help our city and the artists within it flourish. With this report, the foundation committee considers it, it's worked done and hereby submits a set of recommendations to the commission and to the public. There are, as I said, more details in the full set of recommendations, but I did, I think I tried to cover the most important points, and I will take any questions.
Any questions from anyone? I know how enormous this work was. I was a part of it tangentially. So thank you, Chase, and the committee that worked on this with you for it. It's, uh, the right sort of answer. Uh, and it follows all the rules in the right sort of way. We were very careful. And we worked with Bega to make sure it was following all the rights of the rules, and so I know that an entity will emerge that will take on this challenge, uh, but they will have had this homework done for them and how it can be most effective to achieve the goals it wants to be achieved for our constituents in Washington DC. Questions, comments, anyone? Thank you, Chase. Thanks again. I have a few new business things left on my agenda, but I think two of which we've covered. One is vote to approve FY twenty twenty-five grantees. We did that, correct?
Mr. Chairman.
Erin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We, we did that.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we did.
The second one is discuss creation of the grant panelist committee, and Gretchen covered that. We did that.
Yes, I did. Yes.
Uh, then there's proposed commission meeting dates FY twenty twenty-five. We're gonna do that in this meeting, or we do this offline?
Offline.
I thought that should be done, done offline. So the only other business, if I can find my notes, is, um, as was said before, Amy Bourme has stepped off the commission, and I'd like to read, uh, from her resignation letter, which reads as follows. "It, it has been an honor to contribute to the commission's mission to enhance and support the arts and humanities in our community. However, due to business concerns, I find it necessary to step down from my role at this time." And this is connected to what Julianne started talking about, about a recognition that, uh, Bega has made it clear that it's a conflict of interest if you are both a commissioner and you as an individual receive funding. We got the understanding that if you are part of an organization and you recuse yourself from the vote, that was okay by Bega. But if you had individual receiving funding from the commission, it was not appropriate to stand as a commissioner. So for that business reason, Amy has stepped down. Um, that is all the business I have. Erin, did I miss anything?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, even responsible, you just stated, uh, we have, uh, communicated with the mayor's office of, uh, talent, and we have, uh, sent over to them our handbooks so that as they are, uh, looking for other people to fill that particular slot, they can be aware of, uh, where our boundaries, uh, can and will be. It'd be more clearer. They did not have that before. And so, um, I'm glad that we were able to, um, uh, operate and do this in a way where, uh, it was still a good experience for Commissioner Bremet and also a good experience for the commission.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So there being no further business, the next meeting of the commission will be held Monday, October twenty-first twenty twenty-four at five thirty PM. The time is now seven thirty-four PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.